I'd like to call this special meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council to order. Today's Monday, May 14th, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Friedman, Councilmember Dominguez, Councilmember, Mayor Potemarals, Councilmember Hart, Councilmember Sneddon, Mayor Mario.
Here. Is there a public comment, items not on our agenda today? I see someone out there, but he's shaking his head no. Very good, welcome. We'll go to item number two, Madam Clerk.
Item number two, subject fiscal year 2019, recommended operating and capital budget.
Mr. Casey. Ms. Zachary.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation Director, and I have with me Mark School, our Business Manager, Cameron Benson, our Creeks Division Manager, Santos Escobar from Parks Division, Rich Hanna, the Assistant Director, and Judith McCaffrey from Recreation. So, we're all here to provide you with information and answer your questions. I will begin the presentation, then turn it over to Mr. School, and then Mr. Benson will talk about Creeks. We're here to present our fiscal year 2019 budget. First, just want to look at the mission of Parks and Recreation: safe parks, beaches, recreation facilities, enhance Santa Barbara's beauty, promote stewardship of resources, provide quality recreation and cultural experiences, and community services to improve the life of all Santa Barbara residents, and also to welcome our visitors to Santa Barbara as well. We're a very diverse department. We have a lot of different things going on, and hopefully, our presentation will give you a good sense of what we're proposing in the next fiscal year. We will first begin with the General Fund operating budget, talk a little bit about miscellaneous fund, which really is integral to our General Fund operating budget, move on to Creeks, golf, and then swing back and talk about the General Fund capital. At your desire, we can stop after each fund and answer questions, or continue straight through the entire presentation.
Thanks.
So, to begin, Parks and Recreation oversees over 1,800 acres of parkland throughout the city of Santa Barbara, in 60 parks and sports facilities. That includes 16 community buildings, over six miles of public beach. Santa Barbara is known for its beautiful beaches and its great public access. We have four pools, wading pools, 22 playgrounds, tennis courts, and now, we're the proud operators of eight pickleball courts, which are new over at Municipal Tennis Center, volleyball courts, sports fields, and almost 63,000 trees, street trees, park trees, trees in open spaces. Our programs and services, particularly those focused around recreation, include activities over 11,000 on an annual basis. More than 2,500 children are served in our after-school programs, 11,000 reservations for either parks or facilities, special events. Santa Barbara is known for its community special events, and Parks and Recreation generally organizes and coordinates all of those in Santa Barbara. And then, as I indicated in the beginning of the presentation, our community services, we also work with a lot of different organizations to support households through community services in Santa Barbara. And then, lastly, we couldn't do what we do without having a tremendous volunteer base to move all of our efforts forward. When we look at who we are, who comprises the Parks and Recreation Department, we have just over 90 permanent staff. That's in all three divisions, including, as I mentioned, our Recreation, Parks, Golf, Creeks Division, and then Administration. You'll notice in this slide, too, we have 110 hourly hours. About just over 90,000 of those hours are in our Recreation Division alone. So, in order to put on the programs and services that we provide to the community, particularly in the summertime, we hire a lot of young people, and people of all ages, I should say, to support our programs and services. 90,000 hours is practically equivalent to 45 full-time equivalent positions, seasonal. We're often the first place many younger people get their job and then move on to their professional life. When we look at our budget as a whole, it's just under $25 million for the year. That comprises, the General Fund is 16.7, the Creeks Fund is just under 4.7, golf at 2.8, and then, as I mentioned, the miscellaneous fund, which where we have grants and programs come through, and it works in concert with our General Fund operating budget. When we look at our revenue, as you can see, the General Fund revenue is just over $5 million, and that's 40% of the revenue that comes into the department, just under $13 million in total. The Creeks Fund, the revenue is largely Measure B revenue, so from the bed tax, annual bed tax. And then Golf Fund is entirely within the revenue that's generated on the golf course, so whether it's fees through various activities or events that we have there, all of that revenue comes in through the Golf Fund. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. School, and he'll go through the General Fund in more detail.
Thank you, Mr. School.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Mark School. I'm the Parks and Recreation Business Manager, and I will present to you the recommended budget for the General Fund for fiscal year 19. So, when we've considered our approach to the budget, we wanted to just draw to your attention some of the key changes between the first and the second year, sorry, for the second year of the two-year plan, the mid-cycle budget. One of them there is, of course, water, whereas the Parks Division, we have a significant volume of grass and trees and other natural environment to care for. Water is one, a significant cost for us, and the budget that we've recommended for you today includes the impact of two years of rate increases that were not there when we originally came before you for the second year. So, we're looking at about an extra $100,000 in water costs to irrigate in the General Fund alone. Within our youth activities programs, we are seeing a significant increase and have done for the last few years in the demand for inclusion services, and these are programs we're very proud to have a very good reputation for. And, as you can see from the slide, it's almost a 500% increase since fiscal year 11, now costing about $130,000 annually in hourly costs, and so this budget includes a continuation of that trend. And, of course, like many private and public organizations, we are managing the impact of the minimum wage increases coming through, and we've estimated, we think it's about $30,000 of an impact in fiscal year 19. It's included in these numbers, but wanted to just allow you to be aware that the larger impact of that is going to continue to bite in future fiscal years. Also included in our budget is the high-profile renovation of the Cabrillo Pavilion. It's expected to remain closed under renovation for the whole fiscal year 19. That does have an impact on the budget in that it was a revenue-generating asset for the department, and so those revenue losses have been factored in, as well as the direct costs that were able to be saved while the building was being renovated. That left a little balance there that couldn't fully be mitigated, and so therefore, the FY19 recommended budget includes the transfer to capital for the $128,000. Also included, we do have three minor staff changes. These actually have an impact of reducing the expenditure budget required of about $11,000 or $12,000 in the fiscal year, where we're looking to reclassify three positions within the General Fund: a Park Ranger to a Lead, an Office Specialist 2 to an Admin Specialist, and a Recreation Supervisor to a Recreation Coordinator. We think this will better align our staff resources to our services. And the final point here on this slide is that we're actually recommending the elimination of the final two former golf staff who were transferred to the Parks Division when the Golf Fund was outsourced to a management contract. Those positions were fully absorbed to existing headcount in fiscal year 18. So, here is a trend of the last few years of the General Fund personnel. This is just the permanent staff. As Ms. Zachary mentioned earlier in the presentation, there's just over 90 permanent staff in the whole department, and there you can see we're recommending 80.85 FTE for the General Fund in fiscal year 19, with the only change being the elimination of those two over-hire positions. What does that mean for dollars and cents? Well, the budget that we've recommending here is actually a very slight increase on where we said it would be a year ago, of $64,471, for a total of $16.75 million. You can actually see a reduction in salary and benefits, which is driven by the reduction of the two headcount, and an increase in supplies and services, and this is where the majority of that is the water that I mentioned to you earlier, because that's where water costs are budgeted within our department. When you look at that same breakdown now by division instead of the cost type, you can see that Recreation and Administration are recommended slightly higher than where we were, and Parks is actually lower, and that again is because that's where those two positions reside, in the Parks Division, so therefore, removing them reduces the requirement for the budget. When we look at the revenue side of the department, you can see that there's $5.2 million recommended as the revenue in fiscal year 19, and the largest slice of that pie is Recreation Programming, and this is where we charge fees for our services and programs. We also then have a significant portion of the revenue derived from intracity service agreements, with the Public Works Department and Waterfront Department being the two largest within that chunk of the 1.5 million. And then, we also rent a number of facilities and parks throughout the year for public and private events. When we look at our revenue, modest changes again, a slight reduction of $51,000, and the main reason for that, I'll draw your attention to the Parks, where it says, well, the Parks revenue is expected to reduce $121,000. Within the original plan for FY19, within this here, is the expectation that the Golf Fund would contribute $145,000 to the General Fund for the staff who were previously golf staff and now over-hired. So, with the elimination of those positions, no longer is there a requirement for the Golf Fund to transfer monies across to the General Fund, and so therefore, you see that in a lower revenue to the General Fund. So, you have a lower cost and a lower revenue in the General Fund.
There's a question from Councilmember Dominguez. Mr. School.
What is the category Administration revenue?
Mayor Mario and Councilmember Dominguez, the revenue within the Administration Division is the transfer of the staff time for capital projects. So, within the Administration Division, there's a project management team, and their time spent on a number of different capital projects throughout the year is allocated to those capital projects, and you see that come through the accounting as a revenue in the General Fund operating budget, and then a cost within the capital budget.
Thank you.
Okay. So then, just to give you a little bit of a flavor of the types of revenue that the Parks Division receives each year, and it's 1.44 million is what we're recommending for next year. As I mentioned already, the Waterfront Department transfers revenue to the Parks Division for the maintenance of the waterfront landscaping. The Public Works Department, we look after the Sheffield Open Space landscaping. The largest slice of this, and there's a pie chart in a moment, which will show this in greater detail, is the UUT, user utility tax, which pays for the maintenance of street trees within the Forestry Division, and there are a number of other smaller agreements with other agencies. And so, here you can see how that revenue splits across the various programs within the Parks Division, and Forestry receives 64%. That's mostly UUT revenue, with the median parkways and contracts taking the remaining element of UUT for the maintenance of medians in the street right-of-way. Parks and Facility Maintenance there, that's where you're seeing the transfer from the Waterfront Department for the maintenance of the waterfront landscaping. And this may well explain that little nita for you, in that there's just over $1 million coming from the Public Works Department as part of the UUT transfer to fund the Forestry Division's street trees and the median's right-of-way landscape maintenance. The Waterfront Department, $238,000 for the waterfront, and as you can see, these other ones are smaller in comparison to those. Registration revenue is a little bit different to Parks revenue, in that the majority of it is derived from user fees, and those user fees are for facility rentals or for special events along our beachfront, within our parks. Also, with regards to our youth activities, where we have a vibrant after-school and then summer programs and adapted programs. And within our Aquatics Division program, I'm sorry, another product, we have a swimming pool, and we do also then issue, offer aquatics-based summer camps. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I thought you were going to ask me a question, so I paused. I'll carry on. And, of course, then lifeguard services as well are part of the revenue generation for the Recreation revenue. Within the Division is also sports and tennis, so youth and adult programs, and we have then again, an active adult program, which we're encouraging senior services and dancing, and the Creeks Recreation Center, you'll see it bouncing around 5:00 PM every evening. And then, within our Neighborhood Outreach Services, we also offer youth programs, and we rent the neighborhood facilities for public and private events, as well as having ongoing longstanding agreements to lease office space to local nonprofit partners. So, there's a broad range of different revenues across the Recreation Division, of which they have lots of different levers and lots of different competitive comparisons in terms of renting facilities. Of course, there's lots of people out there wanting to rent facilities, and in some cases, we have to factor that into our projections and expect that it's going to be competitive to make sure we can continue to offer good value to people. And you see how that's split across the pie. It's fairly even split of revenue generation across those programs. So, within our General Fund, as I was trying to give you a flavor of the breadth of the programs and services that we generate revenue for, we do have 613 fees, and as part of this budget, we are proposing no increases to just over half of those, but we are proposing increases to 269 of those fees, and when then, we're recommending to delete 27 fees for programs and services that are no longer offered. When we consider our fees, of course, there are so many there, we look to try to maximize participation wherever we can, make sure that we're meeting the community need, and look at what the target markets and other, our competitors are doing in those marketplaces to make sure we can still offer great value for money. I haven't got a slide of all 300 fees here, I'm going to show you. So, this is just a little snapshot of them. And in general, what we're recommending here is a 4% increase to our indoor facilities and our picnic sites. We think that in the comparison we've done with other indoor facilities, that the rates that we charge are still very good value, and we think that there's an opportunity to increase those in response to some increase in costs that we're seeing. Within our summer camp programming, again, our supervisors look at these camp by camp, program by program, and are recommending between 2% and 9% increases for those summer camps. A 3% annual increase on the nonprofit lease rates, that's been typical of the last few years, how we've looked to increase those fees. And, we pulled out one of the ones where as a percentage, it looks a little high in terms of the lifeguard service fees, between 16% and 20%. There are certification costs, which are increasing as a result of the need to provide those essential lifesaving skills on the waterfront for activities. Well, when you start to factor these down into, well, what does that cost per user, per time, or that kind of, it's like 30 cents per person to go and enjoy night moves or reef and run or something like that. So, it covers our costs, and we're hopeful and expecting that it's not really going to be too much of an impact into the pockets of those who participate in those types of programs. And finally, we're really excited, and you had an action before you last week at your council meeting, to offer the Carousel House for rental, and the fees are included for this fiscal year last week, and we need to have those approved for next fiscal year, and we think that's going to be an opportunity for us to invite lots of different recreational activities, as well as parties, social events, and functions, and we're very excited for that opportunity going forward. Ms. Zachary mentioned the importance of the miscellaneous grants fund to us. It is $471,000 recommended for next fiscal year. Just under half of that relates to the AOK program that the department works in concert with the school district to provide those services. And then, $37,000 is anticipated to be received in support of our heavily subsidized summer program, the Parks and Recreation Summer Fund Program. There's also expectations of revenue to be received in support of the Summer Concerts in the Park programs, Arts Alliance, Youth Council, Russ Morrison Junior Golf, and then, the Palmer Park Trust in the Parks Division helps us to expedite some of those projects in the Palmer Park. You will have seen, I'm sure, as part of a theme of the budget presentations, that a lot of departments have been looking at their performance measures and taking the opportunity to update them in some cases, and I wanted to just share with you a highlight of some of our performance measures, and again, there are very, there are a lot in there. But picking out some of the highlights, we're looking to try to measure and demonstrate our program capacity for our recreation programs and understand, well, how well are we filling these programs going forward? And so, we've set ourselves targets by looking at historical trends and giving ourselves a bit of a target to go for to encourage more people to participate and report on that. We're looking to make sure we can award at least 95% of our summer camp and swim lesson scholarships and get as many people into our programs. We're coordinating 1,300 hours of senior programming, and we've also, from a revenue standpoint, we've pulled out those rentals and those activities that really move the needle in terms of our ability to generate more revenue, and that really, frankly, is the ability for us to rent our indoor buildings at weekends for public and private events for over six hours, because that's where we're able to generate sufficient revenue, because they are typically a more expensive item to purchase than to say, go and, you know, have one Zumba class or things like that. So, if we're focusing our efforts on making sure that we can try to fill those buildings every week, we think that's a good opportunity for us to meet and hopefully beat our revenue goals. Within the Parks Division, park safety is extremely important, so therefore, we're going to be measuring our response to any calls we receive for any safety hazards and make sure we get to them within eight work hours. This is also, the next point is also with regards to our response to the drought, and for the last few years, the department has been very conservative on replanting trees. We think that actually, after so many years of drought and the loss of so many trees, either through drought or storm events or other issues, that we want to see the department begin to replant some trees, noting that the water impact of replanting trees is actually pretty minimal. And then, again, it goes to some way to sort of explain what the department does and the length and breadth of it, and we're going to make sure that we're reporting on our inspections and cleaning of 13,278 linear feet of beach, on the average, at least once a week, to make sure that our residents and visitors have a lovely experience when they go and visit the waterfront. And with that, I'll take any questions on the General Fund.
Mr. Friedman, you look like you were getting ready to ask something. Did you have a question?
Well, I was, but you kind of answered it, but I'll, I guess I'll ask it. It was about the water for the trees. How did you come to the 1.5 number, and what is the impact of water? And the reason I ask is because earlier, it seemed that that was a large impact to the budget. Thanks.
Mayor Mario and Councilmember Friedman, that was a performance measure we had many years ago, that we would try to replace trees at 1.5 to 1, that we lost them. And during the drought, we switched all of our young tree care over to the gator bag system. So, if you see those green bags adjacent to a tree trunk, it holds 20 gallons of water, and what it allows us to do is more efficiently water young trees. So, the bag is filled, and then you can leave, and it disperses water more slowly. We also did a comprehensive assessment of our use of water and where we use water, and our drought action plan focuses our greatest water use on our sports fields, where we need to make sure that they're safe and playable, and it spends less time focusing on landscapes and areas where more open space, we let go in a way. We've determined that somewhere between a quarter to a half percent of all the water we use is on trees, and given that we've lost in excess of probably 1,000 trees, if you include the more than 300 we lost in the microburst last year, we're starting to see significant decline in our street tree population. So, we feel like there's a good balance there and that we won't appreciably increase our water use. The water costs are primarily associated with the increased cost to deliver water and the water rates. We haven't actually increased our use of water since 2003. We're still holding at that same level, so it won't lead to an increase in water use. Balance it out.
Thanks. Mr. Hart?
Well, just taking that a little bit further, so the, when would, did the pause on tree planting occur? Not all the way back to 2003, but...
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hart, I misspoke. I should have said 2013.
Okay.
I'm not sure why I said 2003. As part of our drought response plan, which I believe was originally brought to council in 2015, and at that time, the goal citywide was tried to retain our water consumption back to the 2013, and if I'm correct, that's the 25% reduction, up to 30% reduction that we achieve as a community, and we, within that, at that time, stopped planting new trees.
So, how big is the deficit just to get back to where we were at the beginning of the drought, let alone, actually, not even that as a goal, the lost trees, to replace all the lost trees to get us back to where we were, including what's, you know, died during the drought, the entire drought? Is, how much is this 1.5 going to address that deficit? How many years will it take at that 1.5 rate to get back to the original place?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hart, it's not a lot. We were already in a deficit before the drought. We finished an analysis, and I don't have the numbers with me, but I'd be happy to provide them to you as part of our Urban Force Management Plan. We did a survey, particularly of the most densely populated downtown areas of all their vacant tree wells, and then determined which of those tree wells were eligible for a tree, because in some cases, they aren't anymore because of the way a street's been developed. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but 1.5 is a very slow way to move back to trying to repopulate our trees on our city streets, but it's one step at a time, and we're taking it in consideration with both the available staff resources to actually care for those trees, because we do spend more resources in the first three to five years of the tree, and then it's kind of on its own. In theory, it's established, and it'll rely on natural rainwater to water it, and obviously, we'll trim it once it gets to a certain size. But it's one way to start, and we also know, neighborhood by neighborhood, how we would focus that effort, so we wouldn't be doing trees scattered all over the city. We would say, you know, in this neighborhood, we could plant so many so that as part of our watering route, as part of our maintenance route, it fits in. I could give you more information on those details. It's been a couple of years since we presented them.
Yeah, I think, you know, just personally, as a goal, I'd like to see that move faster, understand the resource constraints, and maybe we need to think about a way to get you more resources. So, I'd love to know more details about that. And then, another thing I think that went by that I should have paused at was on the organizational chart, when you have the vacant Recreation Manager position. Is that planning to be refilled, or are you just going to hold that vacant?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, as part of the department's approach to offsetting the loss of revenue with the closure of the Cabrillo Pavilion, we recommended keeping that position vacant until the building reopens. We will be looking at filling that position or something related to reopening of that building in early 2019, so as part of this next fiscal year, but we'll continue to see salary savings to the General Fund, and not in terms of offsetting the loss of revenue that we have from the Cabrillo Pavilion.
Okay. And just so I understood that piece, you are proposing to take capital funds and use them for operating expenses to cover that loss of revenue from the Rec Center. and use them for operating expenses to cover that loss of revenue from the rec center?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, yes. We've worked internally with the city administrator and also with Public Works Facilities to basically eliminate all the non-fixed costs that we can. But we do have a number of fixed costs associated with the staffing, for example, which we still have the staff, but we've been able to reduce other costs. And that's the nexus. In fiscal, in this fiscal year, because we had half a year of revenue, the building was open for the first six months of fiscal year 18. The revenue impact was less this year. Next year, it's a full year of revenue impact.
And then I guess the question is for Mr. Casey. Is that, how often does that happen?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, not very often. But a project of this magnitude that is such a revenue generator for the city, we don't rehabilitate very often. So we kind of looked at this fiscal year as kind of one-time cost and figured we could capitalize on that and have that be part of the cost of the project is to have to absorb the loss of revenue that's going to occur for the year that it's down.
And then, not to put you on the spot, because it's, you know, who knows when this happened last, but is there another example that comes to mind of another department that has been in a similar situation or is... And if you don't know right now, that's fine.
I can't think of another department. We certainly had the Carrillo Recreation Center, but that was paid for by the redevelopment agency funds.
Okay.
And so that wasn't so much as a direct hit to the general fund.
But that was a capital fund source used to pay ongoing operating costs?
That I don't know when it was closed, how we covered those. You know, that's been over 10, 15 years now since we've done that one. You know, we either got to pay it out of general fund capital or out of the capital campaign for the Cabrillo Pavilion. Somehow we got to make up this loss of operating cost.
Right. I understand that. This is a way.
Exactly.
It's kind of an interesting precedent, and so I'm going to think about that some more.
Yeah. And I guess my only response to that would be it's an interesting precedent that I don't think is going to happen very often.
Right.
It's, we don't have this type of facility that is such an important revenue generator for a department go through a complete massive renovation over an 18-month period.
And it's about $500,000 approximately.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, if I could just add too, we are, to the extent we can, maintaining a number of programs that traditionally operate out of the pavilion, like our summer camp programs, our junior life programs. So when you see that, that's the net loss. So there are ways that we're continuing to operate and bring revenue and support our staff. It's not like everything has shut down. You can still get married on East Beach, for example, if you want to. The beach still looks really good. So we're doing, and Reef and Run will happen this summer. So we are making sure that those programs continue. And those balance the revenue, but also the cost to provide the program and support the staff that we have that do work in the winter on winter aquatics that, you know, work in the summer on summer aquatic programs.
And I will add, Mr. Hart, I think in consultation with folks in the private sector who do private sector fundraising and such, they thought that this was an appropriate way to look at those lost costs as well as part of project costs. If we don't, we'll have to look at the general fund and either reduce general fund capital or pull from reserves or look at reducing services. So when I'm balancing those different not great options...
No, I understand there's not good options. I just wanted to point that that's different than normal. So, okay, thank you.
Good. Mr. Dominguez, did you have something?
Yes. Going back to the administration line item, I noticed the, on slide 15, the administration expense went up by 34,000 and it's also 500,000 more than our administration revenue. So I'm curious why there's a pretty big difference between the expense and the revenue and then also why it went up.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I think that I'll ask Mark Schul to answer the increase. My guess is it partly has to do with the salary and benefit changes. But the revenue that comes into the administration is really for the staff chargeback to the capital projects. And we've kept that at 105,000 mostly because we budget on the very limited end of our capital for staffing because we focus more on investing in the actual park or facility, those funds.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, yes, the 34,000 is increases in salary and benefits costs from the original second-year plan.
And so is this 1.5 million all capital projects administration?
No.
Expense? So it's a broader category?
There are two programs within the administrative division. There's the project management program and then there's the administration program which houses the director and the assistant director and a portion of the business manager. That's kind of the general central division for the whole of the department. So it's not all capital projects focused. It is general management as well.
So the department head and assistants?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, if Mr. Schul will go to the number of staff that we have in administration, I think it's about eight full-time equivalents. So that includes the director, a portion of the director, the assistant director, a portion of the business manager, the executive assistants. We have a senior, we have a Parks Capital Supervisor and three, two other full-time staff. So that gets us, we have a couple of half-time staff that are partially charged there and partially in parks.
So when it's portions of staff, is that because the other portion is being allocated to recreation and in parks?
Yes, that's correct. A portion of, for example, my salary is allocated to golf. A portion is allocated to the Creeks Division, the balance in the general fund. And similarly, we have an associate planner who's partially allocated to the Parks Division for park planning purposes and partially allocated to administration.
And in terms of the revenue then for administration, that's not allocated to parks and recreation? If there's a capital project that ends up benefiting either recreation or parks, that still stays in the administration line item?
Councilmember Dominguez, that's correct. Because the staff that are working on those park or recreation improvements, they're allocated in the administration division.
Okay. So I wonder if in the future, if it would be useful to have maybe a different line item or chart that just talked about overhead so that we could see all of the administrative overhead type function costs in one place and then how much we might be recouping for it? Because I think that's probably what's more useful for an oversight body is just to see what's going into overhead versus direct services. I think we'll hear a little more about that tomorrow. And then in terms of the two rec manager positions, what is the difference? Do they have different functions or duties? Or why are there two recreation managers?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Dominguez, the department has had two recreation managers for many, many years. The Recreation Division is very diverse in terms of the programs and services that it provides, anywhere from special events and facility rentals, community service, sports and aquatics, youth services, that the workload has allowed us to, has necessitated that we have two management positions to divvy that up. And when you look at the way we're structured today, we've narrowed it down and we've taken on additional work internally in order to save those costs in the interim. And it's not sustainable over the long term, but it does allow us to reduce the burden on the general fund from having the Cabrillo Pavilion closed.
And so how do you split the tasks when you do hire the person? Is it like sports versus after-school educational programs or what's the difference?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, that can change over time depending on how our programs and services change over time. We will be opening a brand, essentially a brand-new facility that will be operated seven days a week, 12 to 14 hours a day, unlike what we had before. And so we're looking at that facility as an example, coupled with the way we're trying to advance operating our oceanfront, beachfront parks in terms of increasing recreation use and programming. So we actually see an uptick in the amount of resources that we would need to apply in that area. And in the next couple of months, we'll be looking at how to structure, restructure the division in anticipation of that building opening and other initiatives that we may look at developing as a result of the change in the waterfront area.
And which building is that?
The Cabrillo Pavilion.
Of the Cabrillo. And I noticed that you added in a lot of performance measures, which I think is great. And a lot of them were geared towards the recreation. And I'm curious, what is the, what was the vision for the department or for the recreation part in particular in terms of how many student-aged or K through 12 students you want to have involved in city-sponsored activities or city-run activities? Because this really gets into granularity, which is great, but kind of moving up a level of abstrication. What is it that was the goal?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Dominguez, I actually think I'll ask Rich Hanna to answer that question since he worked very closely with all of our division staff and department staff on the performance measures.
Welcome, Mr. Hanna.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, so the key takeaway for us when we were addressing the recreation performance measures was going back to those vital signs. And so to get to your question about granularity, we didn't get down to the K1 through K3 sort of thing. What we wanted to do was look at how are our programs and services being used, coming up with a way that we can speak to capacity and not have that be changed from an outside influence. So throughout this presentation, you've heard about impacts that we may have from independent contract providers, resources come and go, weather can impact our program. So the percentage of capacity allows us to kind of navigate those changes without coming up with a static number.
And what is, when you're talking about, say, 70% percentage of capacity, what exactly do you mean?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I worked reasonably closely with Rich on this process. What we mean there is if you have a camp that has a spot for 10 children, for example, that we were hopeful that we're going to get seven of those spots filled, that would equal a 70% utilization. And so therefore, we have some programs which are oversubscribed and some which we tend to promote to try to fill. And therefore, that's the average of all of those different programs. And we think that by looking at our historical trends and setting a target based off of that is probably a good way to start because we did ask ourselves a question, well, what does good look like? What does the benchmark look like? And it becomes very, very difficult when you are in quite a unique, you know, there's not many Santa Barbara Parks and Recreation Departments that you can compare eggs and eggs with. So we've generated historical data to then kind of inform our decisions and say, you know, if we were at 65, then it's the same for 70, and look for continuations in those positive trends.
And what about in terms of what percentage of children in Santa Barbara were serving? Is that one of the P3s?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, that is not one of the P3s, but that could be something that we would look at. I remember this coming up, I think, at the Joint City Council School District Board meeting a year ago in terms of how many kids in the after-school program do we represent as a whole for all kids in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. That could be a measure that we look exploring and adding to this program.
And the only reason I ask is in an ideal world, we'd have all of the children in the city in either a private or nonprofit or city program or with their family from the time school ends until parental care kicks in. And seems like your uptick is really helping possibly fill some of those voids because I think that's, to the extent the private sector or nonprofits or families can't do it, that's some of the best spent city money is helping these kids learn social skills, stay out of trouble, learn sports, job-related skills, soft skills. So I just want to keep encouraging this trend of both tracking and producing these results for the city.
Madam Mayor, if you wouldn't mind me just adding too, one of the things that we also do is we work jointly with a number of different organizations and they're providing that program and service. And they're often using one of our parks or recreation facilities to do that. So what we capture for you is what we know we can really count. But if we start looking at all the cosponsorships that we have, all the different uses of our parks and recreation facilities, you could sort of see the effect that multiplies. And that's the wonderful thing about it is that a family may be more attracted to one program and less to another, or it may fit with their schedule better. And their child is still getting a recreation or some sort of social program, which is great.
And I think, I don't know how extensive your efforts are in to kind of track this relative to just getting the programs launched and up to 75% capacity, but I wonder if either now or at another time, it's worth talking about what type of resources either internally or with a consultant we might be able to use to measure and catalog the usage or subscription rate of after-school programs in Santa Barbara. Are we doing as a community, again, all sectors, enough of a job keeping activities out there and available? And so I don't know if that's something that you guys might keep track of, if nonprofits do it as part of their delivery of services and needs analysis. But it seems like getting kind of a bigger picture because all this, again, produces great returns on the investment. So I don't know if you have an answer for that now or...
Councilmember Dominguez, I don't have an answer for you, but I would venture a guess that all of the nonprofit service providers out there generate an annual report for the number of people they serve. I think we could reach out and at least establish some sort of a baseline, both the programs that we partner with and deliver with for the Unified School District, but also Boys and Girls Club, Girls, Inc., all of the other, sorry, all of the other service providers in the community as well.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I did have a concern. I get contacted by families who are concerned about street people and homeless people in the parks. And I think this is the section where we would talk about that. I'm wondering, I know we don't have room in the general fund this cycle, but I would like us to consider another park ranger if that would help unless you have an idea that, like what we do on State Street, we have some uniformed community service-type outreach workers in the parks instead of, because a park ranger is uniformed, isn't that right? And they're considered law enforcement and they're, are they armed, Ms. Zachary?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, park rangers are not armed.
Okay.
We have three positions in our budget right now. We have been talking to and working with the police department closely on how to address some of, or as many of, the misuse issues that we have and considerations in our park system. We did, as part of our budget discussion, as we do every year, look at are our resources best allocated across the divisions? If we had an opportunity to do something different, what would it be? Certainly, safety and perception of safety and people's desire to use our park system is always first and foremost among every consideration that we have. In the last year and a half, two years, we have had a more concerted effort. We, it would be great to have more resources in our park system. And there could be some feasibility of having like a community resource individual that is similar to what happens elsewhere in the city. We would entertain further discussion at some point in the future of that.
I just wanted to relay to you what I'm hearing from the community and that our parks, we know that, right? Because we've been addressing Ortega Park and some of the waterfront parks that are attractive to people without homes. So I'm just passing that on. And I know that's expensive, right? A park ranger position. So, and that might not be the best outreach. It might be an AmeriCorps worker or like what we have on the city streets. And then I just wanted to acknowledge how important the Cabrillo Pavilion is. Until it got closed and the parking lot areas are used for staging, it's just disrupted people down there and they love their, they love the parking lot and they, it's the center of East Beach. And we're sure looking forward to it being done and back to full force again, serving the community. But yeah, it's funny, isn't it? People are, when's it going to be done? So be patient because it's going to be wonderful, right, when it's ready. And then I do hear from some parents, again, just relaying to you that some of the summer camps are expensive, like the Legos one I heard. But maybe that's because you have to buy Legos and things. But we also have summer camp scholarships, right, that offset for families that don't have a whole lot of resources. But again, I'm just passing on to you that some parents say that some of the summer camps are pricey. But we know that. Ms. Nennen, did you have something to add on this particular focus in the Parks Department?
Yes. Before we move on to golf, I wasn't sure if we were going to do our statements at the end or now. Should I wait to the end?
I think we're breaking it down into these sections.
Okay. So I'll just do this.
But if people forgot something and they want to say something at the end, they can throw that in too. Okay, go ahead.
I just, this is one of my favorite, there are no favorites, but this is a department that I've used a lot myself and my family and just knowing other kids and people of all ages for all the programs that you offer. It's pretty remarkable, not just the older people, but the younger... It's pretty remarkable, not just the older people, but the younger people and all the in-between people. I really appreciate the programs that you run. I really appreciated when you went to online registration, when you didn't have to go in and show that anymore. So I know it's been a little while, but that was a really great move. And what you're saying about good reputation for inclusion, I mean, I find that to be true, that I think it's broadly used across our city, just from my experience. I want to touch on what Councilman Hart said, that I think the trees, moving faster on replacing those if possible, even though it does use more water. I think it cools the city down, it's a resource for everyone to have shade, and it captures greenhouse gases, and I think it's important to get that up to speed as much as possible if we can, and it may cost more in water, but I'd be supportive of that. And really fantastic news about how much scholarships you offer. I mean, I think that helps with the inclusion, and some camps will be more, just because I think you have to pay more for someone to run a Lego camp, yeah, for the outside people to come in. But just really, I just think really impressive use of the spaces that we have. And I would also agree with Mayor Mario about maybe someone in the, ranging the parks, I don't know if that means a park ranger, but you know, even I did try out the airwalkers and was out there and we were with my family, and there was a whole group of really, I don't know, belligerent group, you know, and then we left because it was not usable space. So that would be, I think, in our parks, and you know, we've used the Ortega Pool also, and it's fine when you're in there, but when you're waiting outside to get your queue in line, it does impact the use of our parks. So I think that's something, I don't know if that's right here, but something we do need to keep addressing in some way. I don't know, but I love the parks.
Thanks. So we'll move on to the golf fund then, Mr. Sewell? Okay.
Okay, so over to golf. The golf fund is an enterprise fund, which basically means there's no general fund taxation support in the revenues. Every dollar that it earns through revenue is from the dollars that it generates on the course. Its mission is to provide, is dedicated and to provide residents and visitors an exceptional and affordable golfing experience in a friendly, inclusive environment for socializing and enjoying nature. So when considering the approach for the golf fund, we're looking to try and make sure that the financial strategy is good and strong. And so, of course, the pricing is key to that, to make sure you offer great value for money for the golfers. They don't have to come to our golf course. There are a number of good options as well outside there. We think we're the best, though. To build reserves, making sure that we've got some fiscal strength there in times of economic recession, and also to continue to invest in the capital in the golf club to make sure that the infrastructure is maintained appropriately. And we think that the budget before you achieves that. And operationally, we are focused on excellent customer service, trying to make sure that people, when they come and play golf at Muni, tell their friends, and then hopefully they'll come and play golf at Muni, and it's a positive feedback loop that we want to encourage. We are looking to invest in significant capital improvements that will actually have a real impact on how the golfer will play and enjoy the golf course. And to fund this and some of the other operating costs, we are recommending small increases in some fees. So here's a couple of charts to just sort of share with you the makeup of how the golf fund revenue is generated, and then also on the right-hand side, you see how that has trended over the last 10 years. So by far, the biggest chunk of the golf fund revenue is greens fees, and that's what the line chart there represents over the last 10 years. And you can see that, just coinciding with the recession, and there was also some construction at the golf course in 2010, greens fee revenue took a bit of a drop. And since then, it's been up and down a little bit, but it's been on a positive trend. And so our budget continues that positive trend. And we're recommending a budget of $1.8 million in greens fees. The next biggest slice of the pie is the cart revenue, and we are, again, projecting growth in our cart revenue, and that's achieved by bundling our cart and greens fees together in promotional prices, and also we're recommending a $1 increase on the cart fee. And then there are another, another number of other revenue sources derived at the golf fund. When you look at that golf revenue, it's 2.98 million is recommended for fiscal year 19, which is a slight reduction of 21,000 from what we said one year ago for the second year. And we've just looked at our budget, did round assumptions and tailored them off a little bit to be more in line with what we're actually seeing at this point in time. Our fee changes I mentioned, we actually took delivery of a brand-new golf cart fleet two weeks ago. Typically, they are on a four- or a five-year lease across a lot of golf courses, so we're excited by that. The golf cart fee has not changed for at least nine years. I couldn't go back any further to find anything out. And we're recommending a $1 increase for those golf carts to coincide with the new lease that we have. And in addition, we're recommending a $1 increase for 18-hole greens fees only from January 1st, to delay that increase until after the peak of the golf summer. And no increases at all for juniors, or nine holes, or twilight. And what I would just mention as well, the final point here is to say is that the number of special offers and promotional prices and opportunities to play golf at a discounted rate are high. They're targeted, they're specific, and golfers who join our email club or take a notice of our notice boards will always find an opportunity to play golf at a very attractive rate, and that's part of the dynamic pricing strategy that we have. Our expenses are recommended at 2.8 million, which is below the revenue that we're recommending, which means that the golf fund is recommending a budget of profit, if I can use that term. The key changes from the original FY19 plan are in supplies and services, or draw your attention to the 90,000 increase in cost, primarily driven by water. We mentioned earlier in the general fund the impact of those rates of up to 13% increase in the use of water. That applies to recycled water. 90% of the water used at the golf course is recycled, but the rate is increasing significantly. So that's the majority of that $90,000. And then here is the flip side of what I mentioned earlier with regards to the reduction in the revenue to the Parks Division, is actually a saving in cost from the golf fund for those two positions which were absorbed in fiscal year 18. And so then that really leaves us in a position where we have a lower expense budget recommended at this point. What that will mean for our reserve balance? Well, we're projecting that we're going to contribute favorably to the reserve balance in fiscal year 18, and then continue that trend in fiscal year 19. And hopefully, if everything gets achieved, as we hope it will, we'll be at around $560,000 of reserves at the end of fiscal year 19. That will still be below council policy, but it will be probably the healthiest it's been in 10 or 15 years. Council policy would probably end up being around 800, 900,000 at that point. So there's still a little bit of way to go to get to that point. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking to try to make sure we can invest where we need to in the course, to make sure that it's going to be, continue to be good. We've allocated $255,000 of the operating budget to fund that year's capital, and it's split across three projects. Some infrastructure renewal in terms of on-course restrooms and maintenance buildings that need some repairs and maintenance. And continuing with the Players Improvement Fund, whereby this is $1 from every paid greens fee goes into a fund that the committee, the Golf Advisory Committee and its subcommittee, Players Improvement Fund Subcommittee, have an opportunity to canvass the opinions of the golfers and recommend projects for the use of those funds. And then finally, we're looking to reinvest into the fleet of vehicles at the golf course to be able to maintain and improve the course conditions. Performance measures, again, we've looked at the performance measures in the golf fund, and we've determined that, yes, we want to continue to see the concession revenue grow, and that will happen through the sale and the delivery of more banquets and tournaments, as well as that synergistic management that we were hopeful for with the management company and the restaurant concessionaire. We're going to continue to look very, very closely at the use of portable water. This is used on the greens, and it's around it only. The rest of the golf course is recycled, but we're still very aware of the drought impact of using that portable water on the greens. And we're looking to also enhance the non-financial measures, because they are important to making sure you can evaluate the success of the golf fund. And so we're going to look to maintain and hopefully see some improvements in our customer service scores, which are already very, very high. We have a third-party organization who comes to the golf course unannounced, from booking a tee time all the way through to having a meal, and they score objectively. And there's actually been three or four months, in the first 18 months, they've got 100%. So I don't think we can get better than 100%, but if we can try and get more 100%, that would be success. And then we also have a program where we sell a preferred card for $69, and it gives a whole host of different benefits to those golfers, and we'd like to see that membership grow. You don't have to have it to play, but if you do, you get some benefits.
Mr. Friedman?
A quick question, and what you just said actually made it pop into my mind. With kind of a package deal for golf, we're talking about the restaurant and golfing, have we coordinated at all with Visit Santa Barbara or some of the local hotels to promote the golf course as part of the destination here? So if they book a stay, they get a discount, and so we're promoting our local municipal golf course?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman, we've had preliminary conversations with Visit Santa Barbara, and we've also discussed with specific hotel owners at chamber events and things like that, where there's been, oh, yeah, let's see how we can work together. To this day, there hasn't actually been a definitive agreement made on that whole package process. But there are organizations out there that I know that the management company work within some of their other courses that they've shared with us around how to package your golf course on a number of websites which people will go to that may not necessarily visit Santa Barbara, but they're looking to fly away and play golf somewhere. So it's certainly an avenue that's under investigation.
I'm pleased to hear that. And the other component of it, a couple of things, is our golf course, it's truly affordable for families, the fees, and just being able to go to the driving range with your kids. I do that with my kids sometimes, and other aspects of it. And being that this year, it's kind of a rebound year for us. We have the request as part of our budget to allocate additional resources for marketing in Santa Barbara. So I think there's actually more of an opportunity currently right now, and there's kind of an urgency that's created in terms of what we're trying to do to market Santa Barbara for this coming summer. So anything you could do to work with Visit Santa Barbara or others, like, beyond what you're doing to promote our golf course and the amenities that it provides, especially to families that we're trying to reach in the area? I think what you just said, it seemed like you're doing that, and I'm pleased to hear that. But anything this year in particular would be a very positive step. Thanks.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Sewell, given the detailed nature of the report, I'm kind of curious about the relationship between your department and the management company that we have running the course. This is very granular, as if we're there in the day-to-day hands-on management, so I'm not sure I'm clear on the relationship.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, the relationship is very good and strong, I'd say that. And because the city, the structure of the contract is that the city is basically reimbursing the management company for all of their expenses, and all of the revenue that's generated in the golf course comes into the city's bank account, there's a significant level of focus on the performance at the golf course. They operate the golf course under the policy direction of the department and ultimately the council. All of the fees are determined by department recommendations and the council adoption. And so there's a significant portion of oversight that the Parks and Recreation Department plays with the golf course. From a staff standpoint, it's actually 0.35 of an FTE, so 20% of my time as a business manager, and 5% of the director's time, and then we also have the former golf superintendent who transferred to the Parks Division, 10% of his time is there. So I have more of a financial, commercial oversight of the contract, making sure that everything is as it should be. And then we also have that maintenance and onsite agronomy focus from the former superintendent. So it's not like, it's just, here you go, off you go, run a golf course for us. We are very much involved in the operations, making sure that they have enough of an automation to be their own private organization, but just giving those clear directional and policy decisions and says, okay, you're now going to try and hit this budget, you know, price the golf at these types of prices, and how they go and do that, you know, is very much left up to them. And that's why they're there, because they are the golf professionals with 27 other golf courses.
And in terms of capital improvements or the responsibility for capital outlay, is that, I mean, clearly you're overseeing that, but the funds have to come from within the golf revenue?
Yes. So all of the costs, all of the bills that get paid for that golf course is through the city's checkbook. The management company receives a management fee for that, and they provide us an advisory service and say, hey, this is where we think the needs are for capital, and this is where we think the needs are for the maintenance and all that kind of stuff. What I will say, and I was remiss, I should have mentioned it at the start of the presentation, I actually have Tom Bugby, who's the vice president of Courseco, the management company, in the audience today, if you wanted to ask him any questions, or if he wanted to step up. But what I would say, and hopefully he'll agree with everything I've said, is that, yeah, it's a good partnership in the sense that, you know, Courseco are there as the golf professionals, and they give their recommendations and advice to us as the department, and then we put it in our view on it and say, does this meet the policy goals, and does this stand and sit within the contract we have? And we make those decisions, and we bounce ideas off each other, and ultimately, the budget you have before you is the combined effort of both the management company and staff, looking at all of the factors to try to have a successful golf course long into the future.
No, you've answered my questions, and we've sat up here, the reports have been very positive from the changes. So I have no detailed questions, but I was just kind of curious, because the way the report was given, it feels like we've got the day-to-day nuts and bolts, so.
Yes, I would say that's correct.
Mr. Hart?
Well, taking that a little further, which entity is responsible for marketing? Is it the city or the management company?
Mayor Mario and Councilmember Hart, that would be the Courseco, the management company. The city and the department, we recommend a marketing budget, and they'll give us a marketing plan as part of their annual budget process, and it's in the contract that they give us an annual marketing plan, and we'll discuss it and we'll say, yep, agree with that, or maybe a little more of this, and they're responsible to execute that.
So the collaboration with Visit Santa Barbara you're talking about is really their responsibility?
Going forward, it would be. When I mentioned an answer to Councilmember Friedman, I was referring to a time before, Courseco were actually in the management agreement, when I myself personally was talking with a lady from Visit Santa Barbara. As far as I know, Visit Santa Barbara and Courseco haven't had any communication, but certainly that will be some feedback from this meeting that we'll take forward.
And then it's not clear from the presentation if rounds are increasing, are they? Have they increased?
So rounds are projected to finish this year very close to where they ended last fiscal year. The difficulty we have in terms of, well, that's not increasing, is that we had a significant event in December with regards to the Thomas Fire, which dramatically impacted the rounds and play in December. Up until that point at the end of November, and I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but it's going to be roughly right, we were up sort of 7% or 8% in play for the first five months of the year. And then the fire came, and then everything that happened in January, and, you know, rain at the wrong time in March, you know, February was pretty good, but we've seen that play has rebounded, but because of the hit that was taken over those two months, really, we're not going to end the fiscal year in growth. So when you try to strip those sort of one-off items out of the planning, and you say, okay, is this a good plan? We're still aiming for that 60,000 paid round goal, which is kind of where we've been over the last few years. And I think if we had normal, whatever normal really means, rainfall, and normal weather patterns, it's very achievable. And I think that's an opinion that I share with the management company. What we do when we look at these things, though, is we don't just say, okay, if we don't hit our revenue, we're completely done. We have cost items and line items in there. We're saying, right, we'll look at this at mid-year. If we're looking on track, then maybe we'll go forward with this item. So we're looking at it to try to balance the books, primarily focusing on that bottom right-hand corner, making sure that we're looking at the impact to reserves. Because if we do miss our revenue for unforeseen issues or for any other reason, we want to have plans in place to be able to manage the budget accordingly, so that we can be very aware of that impact to reserves.
And the most significant piece of that, the changes in this next budget year going forward, is the fee increase. That's where the revenue increase is coming from.
We're actually projecting a slight decrease from the original two-year plan in our golf greens fees revenue, although we are projecting a $1 fee increase in January. And that will probably net about $20,000 at best. That's the amount we're really talking about. So when it's a 1.6, I think it's 1.8, actually, million dollars of greens fee revenue, when you're talking about the $1 fee increase on that portion of rounds from January, that's not really, in this fiscal year, a big turner of the needle. So we're not relying on fee increases to be able to generate the revenue budgets that we're putting before you.
Okay. Well, I know that people say that golf goes with Tiger Williams popularity, excuse me, Tiger Woods popularity, and I know he was in second place in the tournament this last weekend, so maybe that's a good sign as well, too.
We hope so.
Thank you.
Would the Courseco representative please come up? And I'm sorry, I missed your name. Mr. Sewell, what's his name?
He's Tom Bugby. He's the vice president. Bugby.
Bugby. Mr. Bugby, thanks for coming. Do you live in the area?
No.
Oh, just a second. Go ahead.
Up in Northern California, San Francisco Bay area.
Well, thanks for coming down then. And would you tell us, please, about how you've been trying to increase the rounds?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Really, we've almost two years here and the first focus really was learning the property. That's always been one of our big things, is no two golf courses are alike, you know? So even though we now have 33, so you shortchanged us a little bit, but 33 courses under management, you know, we very much don't have a cookie cutter approach. So as you learn the market, you learn a lot of new things, talking to the golfers and working with things. But in addition, focusing on golf course conditions, because ultimately, golf course conditions as well as customer service are really the two things that we're selling out there on a regular basis. Mark alluded to some of our secret shopper scores. You are actually number one out of 33 golf courses in our portfolio last year. So we're very proud of that and what Randy, who's our general manager, and his staff have done there. And then being very targeted in marketing, we invest a lot of money in our online technology-based marketing approach and being able to be very focused on that. And that is also, you know, Mark talked about the specials a little bit. And then the golf market over the last decade, it's no secret, it has not been robust. And so the ability to run specials that are very targeted rather than too broad, you know, we don't send out $10 off coupons. Instead, we'll look at specific market segments. So for instance, we might say, oh geez, weekday afternoons have been slower than what we wanted. And so we will send out emails targeting just that. We also do a lot of redirect campaigns. So if you visit our website, we then follow you around and you'll see our ad in different places. So if you're on Yahoo, you'll see a little ad pop up on the side. And that's a lot of the ways that we will target people from out of the region. Those are often geographic based. So someone in our office, way smarter than me, knows how to go in and actually say, for instance, we might target, you know, LA County. And so anyone from LA County that visits our website, we then follow them with targeted ads that will keep reminding them to come play Santa Barbara Golf Club.
Since we have Mr. Bugby at the podium, does anyone have any questions for him? Good. We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. You do? No, your light's on. I wasn't sure if you wanted to address this particular... Ms. Sneddon?
I'm not sure who the question is for, but the significant capital improvements, are those the restrooms and the golf courts and the maintenance buildings or is there more?
Yeah, Councilmember, sorry, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, significant capital investments was sort of a term used in the overview slide about like the financial strategy we have over more than one fiscal year at the golf course. And so, you know, we invested about $200,000 last fiscal year in capital. We're planning another 255 as part of the fiscal year 19. And we're, this fiscal year, hopeful to be able to encumber probably about 250 to 300,000 in capital. So it's a continuation that compounds over time. And I guess the context of putting that in the slide was that the golf fund for a number of years wasn't able to do that because it wasn't able to generate sufficient revenues above the expenses. And so Tom and I spend a long time now talking about, okay, how do we want to prioritize that capital and what can we go and actually invest in to enhance at the golf course? Because it's a good problem to have. We never had that as before because we never had the available funds to do that. So that's the contents of significant.
Thank you. And...
You're good?
Can I have another?
Yes, please.
Okay. Again, the golf course is, my father-in-law passed away, has a bench there and he had a memorial there with his golf buddies. We've, I mean, I don't know how many decades, 40 years, played with the same golf group. And then the Guppy Golf, my little people play Guppy Golf and we all take advantage of the Twilight Golf. And another example of how you cross-generational and it's an inviting place for people to come and the fees are reasonable. And, I mean, another job well done and it's nice to see the budget improving on it, so.
I think we're good. Mr. Bugby, thank you for working hard on behalf of our residents in the city. Not all of us were happy with the outsourcing, so we're looking forward to you doing a good job or continuing to do a good job for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez?
I had a question on slide 35 on the salaries and benefits. Is that the 0.35 FTEs that you were referring to?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, yes, that's correct.
And where does that end up getting booked into revenue? Does that come into the general fund as revenue?
Oh, no, I understand the question now. No, it doesn't come into the general fund as revenue. It's an allocation of the cost. So try not to be too, I am an accountant, try not to be too techie here. The full payroll cost is charged and then at that point in time, the percentage that's allocated to the golf fund is directly charged to the golf fund and the percentage that's allocated to the general fund is directly allocated to the general fund. So it just puts in the net cost based on the allocation. It doesn't charge 100% into one fund and then have a revenue in that fund and then another cost into another fund. Am I making sense?
No. So the enterprise, the enterprise fund is writing a $70,000 check to the general fund to pay for your salaries, your portions of the salary.
Not quite. It's writing a $70,000 check to all of the individual employees and the general fund is writing a check to all the individual employees for the balance of their salary.
So that portion of your salary is getting paid directly from the enterprise fund?
Correct.
Okay. And why do you do it that way rather than have it come back into the general fund?
I would be speculating. It might be a question that the finance director could better answer. I would say as an accountant, though, you would start to conflate and convolute the transactions if you wanted to charge all of the costs into one fund and then have a revenue line item for all of the allocations back out. It would be redundant. There would be no real value in that because the costs were never born by the general fund, were never intended to be born by the general fund, yet you've charged it anyway. And so it's just taking that step out of it. I think what might be a driver for the question is, I've already mentioned in the presentation about the over-hire from the transfer of the golf staff. And that was a fairly unique set of circumstances that led to a fairly unique set of accounting. But typically, the way I think it works across the rest of the city as well is that if someone is allocated to spend 40% of their time in Fund A and 60% in Fund B, their payroll charges just get charged 40% to there and 60% to there and there's no revenue trying to divvy things up and out. And I think that's the cleanest I can try to explain that for you.
Okay, that makes sense. I was just curious because I know we use the nomenclature general fund employee. So I guess you guys are general fund employees because a majority are, in your case, 80% and 95%. I'm not sure if you're getting apportionments from waterfront for the park maintenance of theirs or not.
No. So yes, you'd be correct. People could assume I'm a general fund employee, although 80% of my cost is borne by the general fund. With regards to the parks revenue from the waterfront, that is a revenue coming from the enterprise fund to contribute towards the costs of the general fund employees who are performing a portion of their work in those areas.
Exactly the same as the golf fund.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez?
And it's okay, I don't have a problem either way. It's just inconsistent. So I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't...
I think I have an answer that might help. When you're talking specifically the waterfront to the Parks Division, that's a crew of people. It may not be the same person on Monday or Tuesday or in July or in August or whatever. And so to have an allocation on a time card that would try to put 20% of someone's time into that fund would be very difficult to administer, as opposed to saying, well, of all the people who could possibly work in this crew and could possibly do the work over there, we know that they have a blended cost per hour of something, which will go into the agreement about how much will be charged across. It's simpler when it's one individual who is, for the course of that fiscal year, very likely to spend 20% of their time working on one and 80% working on the other program. So I think individuals by individuals, it can be done directly in. But when it's more of a crew or, you know...
Pool of labor?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe Uber can borrow from this example. I think they're trying to figure out how to deal with their contract status. Okay, that's great. The other question was the golf fund contribution, and I think you said it, but I didn't quite understand it, the 145, 347. What was that again?
So this is the flip side to what I mentioned in the general fund presentation. Originally in fiscal year 19, the budget contained a cost to the golf fund to reimburse the general fund for two staff who were originally planned to be employed in the Parks Division as an over-hire status. So now because those staff are no longer over-hired, they've been absorbed into the existing crews, there's no longer the requirement for the golf fund to reimburse the general fund. So therefore, you can remove the cost from the golf fund, but you also have to remove the revenue from the general fund.
Okay. So there wasn't really a change in our material position? We just didn't do that when we did the budget the first time around?
Correct. It's not an operating saving. It's an accounting saving.
Great. Thank you.
Good. Did you have anything to add? We're all clear? Okay. So we'll move on to the creeks fund. Good. Thanks, Mr. Sewell. Mr. Benson, nice to see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cameron Benson. I'm the Creeks Division Manager and I will be presenting the Creeks Division proposed FY19 budget. Most of the Creeks Division funding comes through Measure B, which was a 2% voter-approved transient occupancy tax increase back in November of 2000. The funds from that measure or from that 2% TOT are placed into a special fund. The use of the fund is restricted for improvements to the quality of stormwater and other surface waters and to carry out creek restoration improvement. No general fund dollars are used for the Creeks Division to fund the Creeks Division budget. Okay, and getting to the numbers, I'll talk first about the FY19 revenues. I'm going to, oh, I can't point, I'm going to compare the FY19 original plan numbers to our most recent Finance Department projections. As you can see, the Measure B projection for FY19 dropped just slightly from what was originally projected in the two-year plan. However, the interest revenues increased by a substantial amount to cancel that out. So we have a net increase in our projected revenues for FY19 of about $75,000. I just wanted to note that the revenue projections do not include any pending grant applications or any potential future grant applications. We just think those are too speculative to put into our budget, so we don't include those. So our total revenue projection for FY19 is just over $4.2 million. And on the expenditure side, again, I'll compare the original plan for FY19 for what we're proposing today. We have just a minor change in the salary and benefits amount. We are looking at an $80,000 increase in our supplies and services and that really comes down to two specific line items. One is a $50,000 cost that we had in our FY18 budget to use for consulting services for our stormwater discharge permit reauthorization. The state water board is behind schedule on that reauthorization, so we didn't spend any of that money in FY18. We're just rolling that $50,000 expense into FY19 where there was no funding allocated before. And then the other $30,000 of the difference is for additional trash cleanup along the shoreline. We've been, we include in our FY18 budget $150,000 for creek and beach cleanup. We remove about 55 tons of litter out of the creeks and on the shoreline every year. We had, we had worked with the Lodging Association to increase the amount of cleanup along the shoreline. We did that as sort of a pilot this year. We were doing it once a week, then twice a week, then we moved to three days a week and we're still getting a significant amount of trash off the shoreline every day. So we're looking at upping that budget. A $30,000 increase is a 20% increase in that line item. That will provide sufficient funding for us to continue with three-day-a-week shoreline cleanups. We have a minor decrease in our allocated costs and then our transfers out, that is the Measure B contribution to the street sweeping program. We're looking, going from original estimate of $100,000 to $190,000, so a $90,000 increase in that line item. And then the debt, what's listed as debt here is a, and it says a $10,000 adjustment, that's a new line item. That is where the Finance Department places our property tax payments, which will go to pay for, pay the property tax on the 15-acre parcel that the Creeks Division purchased just outside of the city limits along a Royal Borough, just upstream of Foothill. And so our total expenses proposed for FY19 are just over $4.6 million. So this chart represents the Creeks Division operating budget broken down by program areas. The Creeks Division, three main program areas are water quality improvement, creek restoration, and community outreach and education. Our Creeks Advisory Committee has a recommendation generally for how our operating budget should be broken down. The recommendation is that 50% of the operating budget go to water quality improvement, 25% to creek restoration, 25% to outreach and education. We're pretty close to those percentages. Just to give you an idea of what fits into those categories, because there is quite a bit of overlap between them. Within the water quality category, that covers everything from the creek and beach cleanups that I mentioned to water quality research and monitoring, to lab analysis of our samples and so forth. For creek restoration, some examples of that are our creek restoration project maintenance. We have an invasive plant removal program in the creeks and we also have a creek tree program where we work with private property owners who own creekside properties and we work with them to establish native riparian trees on their property along the creeks in the city. And then for outreach and education, those funds go to watershed education in schools. It includes community events and it also includes our budget for TV, radio, web, and print, public service announcement for water quality improvement or pollution prevention programs. So some of the Creeks Fund budget highlights for FY19, our revenues are projected to increase. It's a $223,000 increase from the current fiscal year, $76,000 increase from what was originally anticipated for FY19. Some of our highlights for our expenses next year are $90,000 increase in the street sweeping contribution. So that's from 100 to 190,000. Our creek and beach cleanup line item, which I mentioned, which will go from 150,000 to 180,000. And then our capital program, we're looking at a slight decrease in the transfer this year. The transfer into our capital program goes up and down every year. In the current fiscal year, we transferred $1,925,000 into the capital program. We're proposing $1,875,000 in FY19. And so finally, as we've done in past years in the Creeks Division, we're looking to transfer funds this year to about $463,000 from reserves to balance the budget. That's largely to cover the cost of the capital program transfer. Speaking of the capital program, I wanted to just, I wanted to use this slide to show all of the different projects that we are proposing to transfer money for this year, but I wanted to highlight just a few of them. Up at the top, we have the Royal Borough Open Space Restoration Project. That's on the parcel that the city purchased at the end of Allen Road on a Royal Borough. Creeks Division has been working on a restoration project of the Riparian Corridor there and we're looking at going to construction this summer. We'll be at council hopefully at the end of June with a construction contract for that project. And we hope to begin construction sometime in the middle of July. We have to wait till the nesting birds leave and then we can go in and do that, do the construction in that. do the construction in that, on that project, and we will be, uh, we'll complete that construction sometime around the beginning of November. The Andre Clark Bird Refuge Project is moving forward. We are, we're in a process right now of working with the various regulatory agencies that have to permit that project. We've gotten some really good feedback from them. We have a little bit more technical work to do, but then we're concurrently with that, we're moving into our next phase of design, and then we will be working on our permitting and environmental review through the spring. And then lastly, I wanted to mention the Royal Borough Restoration at Hidden Valley Park, and that's another creek restoration project on a Royal Borough, and we are hoping to implement that project in late summer and fall of this year also. This chart, uh, identifies the capital program funding for the Creeks Division. It's broken, broke down the funding into Measure B contribution to the capital program, which is in blue, and then the grant funding, which is in, um, purple, and it goes back a few years, so you can see that, how we're able to leverage the Measure B funds with grant funds to implement a capital program. We've been very successful over, over the years in doing so. Many years, you can see, we've, we've received more grant funding than we, than the city has put into the capital program through the Measure B funds. Since 2002, we've received, uh, almost $20 million, $19.7 million in grant funding for capital projects. So the, the Creeks Division staff has done an excellent job, you know, identifying and then applying for and successfully, uh, receiving the grants. The Measure B funds are, are critical to that success. It gives us not only the matching funds, but the ability to continue to maintain the projects. We do get audited on those grants, and we do have, have people come from the various granting agencies to come, uh, evaluate the success or failures of a project years after, after they've gone in, and we always, we're always able to, because of Measure B funds, we're always able to maintain the projects at a very high level, and so the, the funders are happy to see that. And that's true even when we're in lean economic times, we've been able to do that. So we will continue to look for those opportunities and continue to try to leverage the, the available grant funding for, for this community. I mentioned the reserves earlier. These are, this is a Creeks Fund unappropriated reserve fund. It's, it's generally used for capital projects, for grant matches, and for times when we have revenue shortfalls. Our Creeks Advisory Committee has, has set a target amount for the reserves, and that target is approximately $3 million. Due to the success we've had with, with grant funding and the increase in TOT and, and the cost savings that we've been able to achieve in our budget this year, we anticipate a reserve balance at the end of the current fiscal year of $3.15 million. But we're also proposing to use 463,000 in the current budget. That would, that would leave us at the end of FY19 with a projected reserve balance of approximately 2.7 million. I want to talk a little bit about the Creeks Division Performance Measures. Creeks Division has approximately two dozen different metrics that we use to, to measure our, our, uh, performance each year. I just wanted to identify a few examples of those. The first two are, are examples in, under our water quality programs. Creeks Division does weekly sampling. We also do project sampling. We have a pretty significant research and, and monitoring, um, program, and we, we produce an annual report with all the data from our monitoring, so it's available online, so people can see what's happening in the program year to year. We also do, uh, we also put together a five-year report, so people can see those trends over time, what's happening with surface water quality in our creeks and beaches. We have a performance measure to complete construction of a stormwater treatment retrofit project this year. In the past, we've done, uh, a lot of different examples of using permeable pavers. This year, we're working on some dry wells that we're putting into the right-of-way, uh, to capture large amounts of water from the, the right-of-way, primarily from the streets and sidewalk areas, and treat that before it gets into the creeks and ocean. In the creek restoration, um, section of our performance measures, we're looking at completing construction of the Royal Borough Open Space Restoration Project. That's the one I mentioned on the end, at the end of Allen Road. And then in our outreach and education, uh, performance measures, we're looking to provide watershed educations, watershed education programs to over 3,000 school-aged children in Santa Barbara each year. We've had that performance measure in place, I think, just over 15 years. I don't think we've ever missed it, so we're, we've definitely, um, we've definitely been able to provide that watershed education program to, to somewhere in the range of 50,000-plus students in Santa Barbara schools. And then lastly, I wanted to pass along the recommendation from the Creeks Advisory Committee. They met in April, uh, to discuss the budget. We, we go over the budget in granular detail, and the recommendation was for the approval of the proposed FY19 Creeks Fund operating and capital budgets, with the exception of the increase for the residential street sweeping program. And, um, I would just want to mention, we have Lee Muldaver, who is the Chair of the Creeks Advisory Committee, uh, here, and I think he, he would be available to answer any questions or about the recommendation that you might have. And I'd be hap, and I'll conclude with that. Thank you.
Are there questions for Mr. Benson from the council? Mr. Dominguez?
I wanted to find out the, the outreach figure, uh, let's see, 600,000? I'm wondering how you measure performance in terms of those funds and their expenditure?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez. It's a challenge to, to measure the success of the outreach programs. So one of the ways we can measure it is with numbers of people reached. But another way that we measure it, and we're actually required to do this on our stormwater discharge permit by the state, is every five years, we do a public opinion survey. And, uh, we were scheduled to do that, to, to conduct that survey in early February this year. Because of the debris flows and the storm in January, we decided to put that off, and we're, we're about to do it next, actually, next weekend, we do a focus group, and then we follow that up with a survey. And, and that can give us some, some more objective numbers about, uh, people's understanding of the connection of the storm drain system to the ocean water quality. For example, what kind of pollutants are, are we seeing in our waterways, and what people can do to be part of the solution in terms of prevent pollution prevention.
So we're trying to measure their change in beliefs or change in behavior?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we try to, we try to understand changes in behavior. We also try to understand this knowledge of the, of the issue.
And in the past, have we seen a change in people's behavior, the actions they're taking?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we see, we see, we have seen changes, uh, in both directions, honestly, in different demographics, and so we try to revise our public education plan to address those, address that feedback, so that we, so that we can reach the, the demographics where we're seeing things drop off, and, and we spend less time and energy where we have more complete understanding.
And with the, the school-aged children that you're reaching out to, is there a follow-up program, or is there testing down the line to see if that program is effective?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, there's, the, the testing would be, um, the, the whole program is voluntary. This is something where individual teachers or principals can contact us and, and become involved in the program. The testing is, is really up to the teacher, so we have, only on the, on a short time scale do we have the feedback. So people, uh, the students come in, they receive the instruction, they do testing at that time, and then any follow-up testing would be up to the teacher.
So what is, what is the goal of that program?
The goal of the program is to introduce, uh, kindergarten through 12th grade students to, um, principles of watersheds and hydrology, hydrology and pollution prevention, so that they can, uh, they can be good citizens in that regard. The, the water pollution problems that we have in the city of Santa Barbara, like, like other cities across the country, come from non-point source pollution, so it's, it's urban runoff. It's really something that everybody in the city is contributing to. So young people, just like adults, have a role in, uh, contributing to the pollution and also preventing that pollution, and so this, that's a way for us to reach the young people.
Are they included in either the focus group or the surveys that you guys run?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, no. Everyone in the, I think we have minimum age in the, in participating in either of those things of 18.
So then how do we know if, if we're being effective?
How do we know if we're being effective with the children?
Yeah.
Well, we know because the, at the, at the point of contact with them, they receive the instruction, and then they, they have a before and after, uh, quiz essentially of the principles that they're being taught there.
Okay. The, um, the dry wells you mentioned, where are those being installed?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we're currently looking at two locations. One is on the Mesa, and one is in San Roque neighborhood.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, the, um, how far ahead do you plan for the stormwater treatment projects? Is that like a five-year look-ahead kind of thing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I assume you're talking about the retrofit?
Yes.
Projects? We generally look one year ahead with those, because they're, they're really intended to be pilot projects, so what we're trying to do is, whatever we see, whatever we see as a potential possibility for us, maybe somebody's, someone is doing that in another city, or some people start to talk about those things, or we can brainstorm something, we want to be, we want to be kind of out in front on those, on those. We don't plan those very far ahead.
So the paving projects are something that you've done, and you're looking for new things to do, not new paving opportunities?
Correct.
Okay. And then, um, I'm not clear on who does the, the beach cleanup? The Creeks Division or the Parks Division? Because it, both presentations reference the beach cleanup.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we both do different things. So the Parks Division, through its beach program, operates, uh, Beach King, we have a, we rake or we, um, groom the beaches on a cycle, depending on whether it's the winter or summer season, um, and that does remove debris from the beaches and make them safer. Uh, the Creeks Division does, through its contracts, essentially walking the waterline and picking up materials. Our equipment can only go in the dry sand. It has to go above the rack line, so there's areas where we're not permitted to go. And we also have Parks Division staff that do cleanup around the, the outfalls. So there's a variety of different resources that get invested in, in beach-related maintenance and cleaning. And it's, it's difficult to realize, but it's almost a constant. You could be out there every single day, because if it's, if it's not even necessarily coming out of the storm drain, it's already in the coastal ocean and it's getting washed back up again. Or obviously, the more people we have on the beach, sometimes the more likely we might be, um, facing litter issues, and Mr. Benson might have more information, but it's two different, so the general fund pays for some, and then Creeks Division comes in and does additional work to, to enhance the beach scene.
No, that's a great explanation. I, I did, I get the division responsibility now. One thing that occurs to me is that the Creeks Division has a tremendous amount of technical expertise about non-point source pollution, sources, methods of addressing that, and the county is struggling with the difficult situation at Galleta Beach, and I'm just wondering if there has been any kind of communication or collaboration or discussion about what you've learned, um, over these many years of working in this space that could help them in that situation. Maybe completely different things that aren't relatable, but, um, I would encourage you to reach out to them, because I think they have a significant problem and are looking for answers. I know they're going to be considering consultants to help them with that, but there probably isn't anybody that knows more about this than you and your division and staff.
Mr. Benson?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I would just say, we have been in touch with the county, and we've, there is somebody who, who knows an awful lot about this, and that's a, a professor out at Bren, who the Creeks Division has worked with since 2004, really developing the, the science of DNA testing for, of bacteria primarily in, in the environment, and being able to distinguish a human waste from dog waste or bird waste or something like that, where human waste is, is much more likely to be a public health threat than, than, um, bacteria coming from wildlife. And the, uh, and that person is involved in, in doing testing out there and monitoring the water quality there, and so I think they've got, I, I think they really do have the best science available. Unfortunately, it's, it's, it's a slow process, and it's why we, it's why we're not able to use the DNA testing really on a regular basis for, you know, to get overnight results or even, even on-the-spot results of what water quality looks like in a given area.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Hart. The part of what was taken to Galleta Beach was removed from Coast Village Road and areas of the city that it, you know, the city part of Montecito. So thank you for acknowledging that. Mr. Friedman?
First, I'll follow up on my colleague's line of questioning on how, if we know that your education is effective. Come talk to my eight-year-old, and you'll be quite surprised, he's been through some of the programs, so he's much more knowledgeable than I am on all of these things. On page D77, one of your performance measures, it's the arundo removal. The, the adopted for this year and for, proposed for next year is 20,000 square feet removed, but you hit 45,000 this year. Can you speak to the increase? And then I have another question after that.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, the, uh, the increase this year was due to a couple things. One is we had some additional grant funding, but, but it's also the types of areas we're tackling. So we're, we're on a, we've been on a major campaign for the last several years to eradicate arundo, which is a highly invasive weed that, in the, in the creeks, all the creeks in the city. Sometimes it's in really remote areas, and there's a small stand of it, and we have to send a crew up there, and it takes, it takes just as much time to remove that as it does a much larger area. We also are often affected. We use the California Conservation Corps as our contractor for doing the removal, uh, and we are affected by their ability. They, they also are called off for fires to, to, um, cut fire breaks and things like that, so it depends on the availability of people we have and then the access to the, to the arundo, and I, I think we're hopeful that in the, in the next fiscal year, we'll be able to have all the, all the arundo removed from a Royal Borough, and we'll be starting up again with the removal this summer.
Great, that's great news for a Royal Borough. I wanted to get some clarification on street sweeping. So the proposal is to nearly double, uh, the, the resources towards it. So what does that mean in terms of how you're actually going to be implementing it? Is it, are we going to increase, add new streets to the street sweeping program? What, what does that entail?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, the, the street sweeping program is a unique program, or unusual program within the city, in that it is, uh, it is administered by one department, it's, there's enforcement by another department, and there's, uh, funds coming from a third department. And my understanding, and my understanding of this increase is that there will be no change in service. These are just, uh, these are just increased costs of providing the same service.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Friedman, we can talk about this more next week at the Public Works Budget when the Streets Division manages it. It's my understanding, though, that we've used reserves from the program to make up the cost differences, and we've now bled through those reserves, and so, uh, this was a request that came a couple of years ago to use the reserves up rather than hit Measure B funds, but those reserves are now gone. So Mr. Benson's right, that we're not looking at an expansion of services, but we need to make up the cost difference from no longer being able to use reserves to offset some of those costs. of those costs.
Ms. Nedden?
Thank you. Do you administer the Arroyo Burro Watershed Resource Center? Is that the city or that's a different -- what is the interaction between the city and...?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, then, the Watershed Resource Center is owned by the county and it is leased to Art From Scrap. And Explorer Ecology does the programming there. Measure B and the creeks division contribute some nominal amount each year to help with the administration of that facility. It is a facility that's open for watershed-based groups, nonprofit groups in Santa Barbara to rent for their programming or events and things like that. And so we pay part of the administrative cost to Explorer Ecology to allow that to be a community facility.
So we're not providing the educators through that program, but we do support that program?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, then, the creeks division does fund the -- does fund all the watershed programming that Explorer Ecology does there. So the watershed education program, essentially, they serve as a contractor for the creeks division to do the watershed education.
Okay. It's a really fabulous program, that one, for education. And then for the dry wells, how is the water treated? Is it captured first and then treated on-site and released? Or is it then goes into the sewer system? Or how does that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, then, the water is -- the water comes down the gutter and it goes into the dry well, and it's treated through infiltration in the soil. And so it will work to replenish the shallow groundwater. One of the issues in finding potential locations for that is finding places in the city where the groundwater is deep so we have enough soil to provide that filtration before it gets to the groundwater.
Thank you. And I just also say that the planting natives programs, whenever you -- a person goes out to go plant natives, it provides a really great education while people are planting on why it's important. And it's a great service, I think, to the community. And I also had a question about the street sweeping, but the funding of it, is it Public Works or it's Parks? Or I'm still not clear on, is it, is this just the streets that are impacting the creeks that this pays for? Or how?
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Stedman, I think if any street impacts the creeks, all streets impact the creeks because all water flows down to the watershed, to the ocean. Again, we can talk about it more next week when Public Works manages the project, but essentially you have two street sweeping programs. You have a commercial street sweeping program that the general fund or Streets Fund pays for. And then you have a residential street sweeping program, which is paid for by citations on the tickets and then supplemented and offset or completed funding from Measure B funds and reserves when we had them. So those are kind of the two basic street sweeping programs. Measure B portion is only funding a portion of the residential street sweeping program.
That's the citation street sweeping?
Correct.
Okay. And is it, the citations are equally distributed everywhere, enforced equally?
Well, the citations are written by the -- the streets, the police department has three parking enforcement officers that goes out and writes citations during street sweeping days. And all those revenues, after the police department has made whole for their costs and expenses, then go to fund the residential street sweeping program. Measure B then funds the remainder of the cost of that program.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. And Measure B funds are used because they contribute to the quality of stormwater runoff. That was how the program was rolled out in 2000, I remember specifically. We have a -- were you done, ma'am? Okay, we have a couple of speaker slips, but did you have a second round of questions? Or, okay, go ahead, please.
Someone had mentioned human waste in the creeks, so I just wanted to follow up. What is your policy or what do you do in terms of dealing with encampments? I know on the east side and part of the west side, there's encampments, and what are we doing to deal with that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, encampments in the creeks are a significant issue for us. We have a full-time code enforcement officer. We work closely with the police department, with the Parks Rangers, with Caltrans, with the county. And we're out in the field and out along the creeks a lot. We get reports from residents and from businesses about encampments pursuant to the city's policies. We send somebody out. We have to provide notice on those encampments before we can remove them or clean them up. So we provide the requisite, we postings on the encampment itself. And then we will -- and then we have a contractor that comes in and will clean the, clean what's left of the encampment after the people have left, which is considerable. We do have other locations that are not encampments where we find human waste, and we have a contractor that will go in and remove that.
And so you mentioned these different partner agencies or within the city who you work with. Is there a regular meeting among those stakeholders, the county, police, park ranger?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, yes, there's a, there is a regular meeting. It's coordinated by the DA's office.
And that's specifically for encampments?
Those meetings cover encampments and any other kind of environmental-related water pollution-type issues. Sometimes it has to do with, they'll cover things like habitat destruction, things like that as well.
How often do they have those meetings?
I believe they're monthly.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Muldaver, you're up first, and then you'll be followed by BB Longstreet.
And Madam Mayor, just to confirm, we do have one more section to go of the presentation on general fund capital.
Oh, of course. Yeah. I thought they wanted to speak on this section.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Lee Muldaver, the chair of the Creeks Advisory Committee. We conveyed a letter to you, which I assume is in your packet, and I want to point out this goes back for several years, not only before Mr. Hart was our liaison, but also before Councilman Hotchkiss was our liaison. It has to do with, I guess, Slide 45, where they talk about the transfer, and it's talking about the proposed increase for the parking. And I think Mr. Casey gave a really good overview that part of the Measure B money covers part of the cost for the residential street sweeping. And four or five months a year, that makes a significant benefit for runoff into the streets. The rest of the year, it's a strong public service. I think part of the issue that we're concerned about is that there was a misestimate several years ago about how much parking ticket enforcement revenue would be generated over time to sustain the actual cost of the program through the Public Works Department. And it's our concern, you know, we were talking about trying to increase the number of trees and increase the number of water, and, you know, every division is fighting for every penny to provide excellent services. They've got three parking enforcement officers, and it's our understanding, number one, that 30 to 40 percent of their billable hours are doing other police-related duties, not related to street sweeping or protecting the creek or getting people out of the way of the Public Works contractors who are cleaning up. And that's money that, in our mind, ought to be coming from the police department rather than Measure B or Public Works. And that's part of the reason that they're requesting the extra transfer this year. And if we were only paying for the billable hours of actual performance in the field, that $90,000 would probably be less.
Can you wrap up, please?
Absolutely. Our second concern, as you've all known, if you've ever had a parking enforcement, is if you pay within 30 days, it's one amount. If you pay within 60 days, it's another amount. If you wait till the end of the year and the DMV gets it from you, it's a much larger amount. And our concern is that when it goes to DMV collection, the money that comes back is not divided proportionally between Measure B and Public Works, street sweeping and the police. It's going primarily to police.
Thank you, Mr. Muldaver.
And that's why our committee was concerned. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez, do you have a question for Mr. Muldaver?
What's the letter you were referring to? We don't, I don't think we got it, did we?
Uh-huh. The Creeks Committee memo, like a memo?
It was pretty brief, and it supports the staff recommendation for the budget.
Okay, from the commission.
And it listed those two areas of ongoing concern. Thank you.
Yeah, they did forward that to us.
Ms. Longstreet?
Always.
You want to wait until the next, okay. So if there's no other discussion about the creeks fund, we will go to the next section. Are we back to Mr. Sewell on that one? No, Ms. Zachary?
Madam Mayor, back to me, and I have a few slides, and then happy to take any further questions. Every year, we look at our capital program and ask council to consider allocating funds to various parks and recreation projects. And we base those requests on a number of factors. First of all, we're always working off our six-year capital program. So in a way, we're in year, going into year two of six years, and this time next year, we will be re-upping that six-year capital program. When we put the capital together, we look at a range of issues and factors. The extent to which a building might be used, the need to refurbish a sports facility because of its use, whether it also is a place that has a significant high use from the public, and also whether the project has a significant benefit to the public. We look at the facility's condition. We consider safety, and not just in terms of the facility condition, but actual, the environment itself. And then accessibility. Increasingly every year, when we implement a capital project or we identify a capital project, we consider access, and it's a great opportunity, not only to make that facility improvement, but to make the location consistent with the city's accessible plan. And then lastly, last two things, community demand and need. As everyone who works for the city experiences, we have a lot of members of the public that engage in discussion and dialogue about what they need, what they'd like, what's working, what's not working. Our Parks and Recreation Commission gets actively engaged in discussing these things. Our Neighborhood Advisory Committee gets engaged. And so as we think about projects and programs and the opportunity to reinvest in our parks and facilities, those become part of our discussion. And then lastly, the opportunity for long-term benefit. So over the last about 15 years, as we look at improving a park or recreation facility, we try to be comprehensive. We might implement it in phases because there's not always enough funding to do everything that we want, but we really try to consider the entire project. So out of the meeting that you had last week when we were talking about the master planning for Ortega and Dwight Murphy, put together a few slides to kind of run through what we're working on in parks and recreation. Many of these projects, the Cabrillo Pavilion, the Carrillo Ballpark, municipal tennis, are projects that have been in the works for a number of years. And as we start with sort of planning and design and concept, we move into final design. And then it can take a number of years for us to essentially cobble together the funding to pull a project forward. So right now, we have some major improvements underway. Obviously, the Cabrillo Pavilion, the Cabrillo Ballpark, which started back in 2010. It'll be done in 2018. Municipal tennis, we actually, in our capital program, have a full-scale renovation of that whole facility, but we're biting off a chunk and putting in some play amenities for children and improving access and the use for tennis and pickleball patrons as a little baby first step towards looking at the opportunities there. It has a lot of needs. It was built in 1937, so it's definitely has some opportunity for the future. But for now, those are the things we're working on. Similarly, we have a number of projects, some of which have been before council recently, related to renovating Louise Lowry Davis Center. That project has been funded through the general fund to about $200,000 to get us through planning and design. That's a location where we would be eligible, for example, for community development block grant funds because it's in a district where it's eligible. So we're queuing that project up for grant funding. Similarly, Thousand Steps has been in the capital program for probably 20 years, and now we're working on the engineering design work. Council allocated some of the Rafufio oil spill money toward that project, so we anticipate we will go from planning to design to construction next year, and so that's in a good phase. And then the last four projects are ones that we initiated, really started working on this fiscal year, but have been in discussion by council and the community for a number of years. One is Bonnet Park, with first and foremost a focus on the field improvements, which sort of drove the beginning of that project. We did the playground a couple of years ago. We've got access considerations that we've discovered we need to take into consideration. West Beach Splash Playground, as I mentioned, as we mentioned in our council presentation, awarding that design contract, the wading pool's been closed for, I think, now four years. It was already leaking. We realized that rebuilding a wading pool's not probably feasible and maybe not what people want anymore. And so we're looking at the West Beach Splash Playground, the funds that council has approved for that project, and we have a request for some additional funds in the next fiscal year. We'll get us to making sure we have a concept, a plan, that we can move forward and implement and secure funds to build. And then lastly, the master planning for Ortega and Dwight Murphy. Again, those started out five years ago as we really need to find a way to create more sustainable field space in Santa Barbara because we have so many people that want to play, play soccer, play multi-sports. And we are still only having turf fields in Santa Barbara. Great opportunity to look for artificial turf. Once we started peeling back that onion and looking more closely at, well, gee, if we did this, it's going to trigger that. We need to do restroom improvements. We had the strong foundation come forward. So as we start looking at projects and realizing just looking at one component of it isn't necessarily the right way to go about it, let's take this opportunity and really master-plan these parks, particularly since they haven't had a lot of investment for many decades, knowing full well that through the process of planning and design, we will be looking for sources of funds and also determining how a project might be phased. So even when we started the Cabrillo Ballpark project, I think we started with $75,000 to do some drainage improvements. And then we had, oh, actually, we started with $35,000 to put in some fencing. Then we had $75,000 to do drainage improvements. And so we've sort of chip away at these improvements and then ultimately get to a full vision and put together funds to move them forward. So these are the ones that Parks and Recreation's actively engaged in this year that will continue into the next fiscal year. And so when we look into the next fiscal year in our capital requests, we consider what's currently underway, what our staff workload is. We also look at projects that we may have had a certain amount of funding to initiate the effort. So for example, we have the master plan funding for Dwight and Ortega. We expect to get to a certain stage in that project where we'll need additional funding to complete the design process. So if you think of it in phases, usually we ask for sort of the initial preliminary design concept money to figure out what it is that could be done, get into final design, and it gets further refined. And through that process, are always looking for how are we then going to implement and fund it? And different projects sort of come up to the surface based on a variety of factors. One grants another community demand. So with next year, we are proposing, first and foremost, to increase the funding for Franceschi House and park renovation. That project was before council in January. We have $200,000 in the capital program now to sort of start that initial concept planning design for the alternative to the house. Council asked for us to look broader and develop a master plan for the whole park, redo the master plan. So we're proposing some funds for that. But also, we know that if we don't address the SEQA issues, particularly the historic resource issues, we'll never get to the next phase of that project. So the request for $250,000 would complement what we have, and we believe by the end of next fiscal year, we'll have a plan to move forward with that project. How it gets funded, hopefully, as we go along, we'll determine that. Similarly, the Ortega Park master plan and renovation, the funding that council approved last week gets us through the master plan process. We are planning to be complete that work at the end of December. This funding will allow us to take it to the next level and actually put some plans on paper and move through more of a complete design process. The off-leash dog... The off-leash dog area in McKenzie Park, that's a project that's ready for construction through the planning and design and permitting process, looking at the accessibility improvements we had to do, we have to do, refining our cost estimates. The request for $135,000 would fully fund that project. We expect to begin construction in August, right after Fiesta, and move that project forward, something that we've been working toward for the last three years. And then the West Beach Splash Playground, final design, council approved $150,000 for our initial effort now. We discovered through our preliminary research process that we also need to evaluate restroom options. And so this additional funds would allow us to add the architecture design element to complete that project. So given what we're working on and that we are, we have a number of projects underway, we want to further advance existing projects. Our request is for $710,000. This is just the general fund request. When we look at our other funding options, I mentioned community development block grants. We apply for one every single year. So we queue our projects up to do that. We have successfully secured funds from the State Coastal Conservancy in the past. So we're always working with those staff to identify feasible projects. We recently got $250,000 grant from the California Housing Related Parks Program. And that is what we're using to help fund the Cabrillo Ballpark project. Measure C is a discussion that, that council will have in the, in the coming weeks as what parks-related infrastructure would be appropriate for Measure C funds. And then Councilmember Hart asked about the Bond Act last week, Proposition 68. It's on the ballot for anyone who's interested in, in voting this year. And that is an effort that's been underway for many, many years. Early on, in my career as a city employee, both as a Creeks manager and then in the general fund portion of the department, we had Proposition 12, Proposition 40, Proposition 84. We had a number of different bond acts that the voters in California approved that brought forward capital opportunities for reinvestment in parks and recreation facilities. And obviously, the Creeks Division has had a great opportunity to secure grant funds through many of those bond acts. We haven't had a park bond act for many years. And so there's been a lot of work at the state level to try to get something on the ballot. If the voters do approve it, it is a $4 billion bond. And it's allocated for a range of projects, parks, climate, coastal protection, water, drought. It's spread across a number of different interests throughout the state. Depending on the program and where the funds would be allocated, local governments are eligible, regional, special districts, states. And again, it depends. There's a lot of funding proposed for state parks and state park infrastructures in terrible condition. So that's, there's an understanding there. Usually, there's a per capita allocation. In fact, we've used per capita money before to enhance our parks and recreation facilities. The renovation at Oak Park restroom, for example, was a per capita project, pretty basic. But we were able to go in and make improvements there. So there will be some. It's unclear how much that will play out. It could be a little, it could be a little more. There are lots that are competitive. But by moving our projects forward and getting through the design and the planning process, getting our entitlements, because they often require proof that you have approval to build before you can get those grant funds, puts us in a really great situation to move forward. Whether it's a general fund, parks and recreation project, or similarly, a Creeks project. A lot of those initial funds get us sort of ready to build or as, as our former president said, shovel-ready. And that positions us in a better way to actually secure those funds. And then also having a match. So some of, you know, the Bond Act pretty much shows 20 percent match is required for just about anything that I could see, looking at the language. So again, how that match is calculated. But it does give us the opportunity to, to make the case for projects that we have. So as you see the projects that the department proposes, we're anticipating, we're queuing those projects up for future funding, even if it might take three or four or five years to go from complete to ready to build. And, and that's kind of what we face pretty much all the time in our projects. I would add, and I, I wasn't aware of this until recently, there is a provision within the Bond Act that, that provides for a certain amount of money. And I can look it up quickly, if, if you would like, for communities that have already passed revenue enhancement measures that include looking at enhancing parks. So it could be, although the proof is when it actually passes and how it gets implemented, that the city could be better positioned because the voters approved Measure C last year. So those are the ways that we look at how the Bond Act might enable us to move, move our projects forward. And I would go back, the last, previous slide said, Private Nonprofit Foundations Limited. That's where we're really challenged. We rarely get funding from a nonprofit foundation. They don't generally like funding capital improvements. We do have $53,000 from the Woods Claysons Foundation for the playground at, at Muni Tennis. That's rare. That's not, that's not common. We have worked with other nonprofit foundations that have a donor-designated desire to invest in a park or a recreation facility. And that's when we've been able to leverage funds, working with the Park Foundation, to be able to move projects forward. So it happens. It just doesn't happen that often. But we do look for that. And then the last thing I didn't mention, mention, actually, the County Coastal Resource Enhancement Fund, on occasion, has been a partner with the city in moving forward some key city projects that are on the coast. And so we always look at the CREF opportunity and hope that there might be a fit there. So that concludes the capital presentation. And I would just close with the, the entire presentation. Parks and Recreation Commission did meet last month and consider the budgets for both the general fund, the Creeks Fund, and the Gulf Fund. They recommended approval. They did also consider the concerns and considerations of the Creeks Committee and wanted to echo those as it related to street sweeping. And I believe BB Longstreet, who's the Chair of the Commission, is here to provide comments to the council.
Can I start with a question about Prop 68? So that's mostly for capital expenses. It wouldn't be if we're looking for funding for more security in our parks? That's a different, that's a different thing, isn't it?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. Often you find with these bond acts is they do want to fund capital investment, but not ongoing operations.
Oh, okay.
There is some, some of the elements of the Bond Act do provide for some planning money and planning efforts. I can give you more specifics on that, but not, not for day-to-day operations.
Okay. I don't see any lights on. Mr. Hart, you going for it?
Well, thank you for that information about Prop 68. Is, is state parks who decides what the grant programs are going to be? And is that something that's going to be decided? Or has, is it part of the bond measure?
Mayor Maria and Councilmember Hart, the actual proposition has got some specific sections that allocates funds to state parks for infrastructure. Certain state parks are named, just like certain conservancies are named, like the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And where there is a special district that's successfully advocated for an allocation of bond money that's set aside, often you find that Southern California and Northern California, depending on, on the location.
But the money beyond that, that's going to be available through these competitive grant programs, that, the rules for that haven't been set yet.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, it depends on the agency that will be dispersing the funds. So different agencies can, I think there's a, there's a desire that they use existing grant guidelines. So there's not a lot of time spent with bureaucracy. And a lot of these agencies already have specific guidelines when they have bond money that comes in for capital improvements. And they generally tweak them slightly, put them out for public review, and then move forward. I do know the Coastal Conservancy will receive a certain amount of money, really focused on coastal enhancement, coastal resiliency. Department of Fish and Wildlife, also for the protection and enhancement of wildlife resources. So it follows along existing programs that they already have in place and, and enhances those. Because so many have sort of run out of the bond funds
Right.
that, that they've been using previously. And essentially, that is how so many of these efforts are funded and moved forward.
Well, I guess the point I'm trying to make or thinking about is that the city on the public works side has been very successful in the state transportation grant cycle program. It's a different program, very different defined set of sources of revenue. But I would hope that there would be some interdisciplinary conversation between the different departments about a strategy that would be driven by the grant fund availability in addition to the needs-based analysis that you're doing. You can't do one or the other, but you want to be in a position with the projects, as you described, teed up, ready to go. And, you know, we might have to bend what we can get funding for versus what's the most critical need and don't want to miss an opportunity to get that money. So that's, you know, that's the point I was making last week in bringing this up. Sounds like you're thinking ahead already. And just want to encourage more of that because the city has been extraordinarily successful on the public works side with that other approach.
Thank you. Ms. Longstreet, come on up. And we can continue our discussion after.
I'm BB Longstreet, and I'm the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission this year again. You know, 22 years ago, when I joined the commission, we had a field study. And we still don't have any new fields because we are a built-out city. We have beautiful jewels of parks that are tired now. So I'm putting in my appeal for some of the Measure C money as we come down. I think we're only going to be able to tolerate so much roadwork a year. We need to build a new police station. But we also need to have some beautification of our city. We talked a little bit about trees. Every one of those roadway and sidewalk improvement projects, let's start adding some trees to it. Let's make that part of that budget to, to further that cause. Ortega has been such an issue. And when we look at the master planning for that, it's been impacted by many things. Parking is going to be one of the big ones. We're going to, we're going to be looking across the different departments about how to solve the problems at Ortega Park. The idea of more park rangers is always great. And I would put in an, an appeal for more parks workers. Because if we have someone cleaning up that park every day there, that helps to curb bad behaviors. I look at a lot of our facilities, and I see how old they are. I look at, you know, the West Beach area. And, you know, we have an empty pool. That's not an inviting place. We have Plaza Vera Cruz downtown. We have Plaza Del Mar. All of them can use major infrastructure work. So as we move forward, I think we need to keep that in the front of our minds. I would say we are very proud of our inclusion. And I just want to give staff a great kudos. It costs money. But we're providing programs for kids and adults that wouldn't otherwise be able to participate in our community. So that's a big one. And now to the difficult topic, topic of the Creeks request. I look at it as an opportunity. It's an opportunity for transparency and accountability. And it's something that we need to have front and center all the time going forward with Measure C. So let's use this opportunity to show how those dollars are being spent, to account for how the budget works between different departments, and make it a positive thing. It's no one accusing anyone of, you know, malfeasance of any way. But it is a time for us to look at transparency. And we would do well to set up a committee that, for Measure C, that is as committed as the Creeks Committee. They do an excellent job in watching that money. They have done it since its inception. And I think it's kept everything on track. So I am very proud of the work that they have done. I've been their liaison, and I've watched them go over these budgets. And they do it with a fine-tooth comb.